Good evening, everyone, and welcome to, I guess, what we'll call tonight's official council meeting. For those of you who are in the viewing audience here in the council chamber, or those who are on television, or watching online, you'll probably notice an unusual number of young people in the council chamber this evening. And it's because earlier this evening, we had our mock council meeting as part of our My Ideal City Initiative for grade-five-ish students throughout our school system, and we'll be acknowledging some of those students shortly. But at the beginning of this meeting, I would invite those, as they are able, to stand before the Senate Leader and repeat this evening's choir. Thank you very much. It's been moved by Councillor Gazola that the minutes of the regular meeting held April 24th, 2017, and the special meetings held April 24th and May 1st, as mailed to the Mayor and councillors, be accepted. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? There being none, you will notice that there are a number of pieces of communication referred to file, as listed on the agenda, all pertaining to flag requests. And we will now move on to presentations, and I'm going to go to the centre podium for that. Well, once again, welcome, everyone, to tonight's council meeting. And as I indicated, we had the opportunity earlier this evening to be joined by the participants of the My Ideal City Initiative, which is a partnership between the City of Kitchener's Office of the Mayor and Council, as well as Kitchener, the Kitchener Citizen Local Community Newspaper. It's an initiative we've been doing with the grade-five students, or thereabouts, because sometimes we have a split class, for the last four years. And I want to thank both Helen and Carrie for their support of this initiative, along with the staff in our office, and in particular Amy Carroll-D, who's been taking the leadership of this one, along with the other staff in our office. Tonight, we had a mock council meeting earlier this evening, and we'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the various participants who are here. And I would, in doing that, invite them up, along with their councillor, so we can present you with a certificate and get a picture taken. So the first person that we'll invite up is Claire Gosnell with CAO Jeff Wilmer. And Claire represented one of the delegations this evening. Next up, we'll bring forward Clara Beamish, and Clara was partnered up with Councillor Zignetski. Next up, I will invite Mikhail Milankovich, and Mikhail was partnered up with Councillor Kelly Galloway-Seelock. Next up, we'll have Jayden Randall-Eddy, and Jayden represented the delegation who was opposed to the issue we were debating this evening. Part of a healthy democracy, different views of, different opinions. Next up, we have Isaiah Solanich, and Isaiah was partnered with Councillor Yvonne Fernandez. Next up, we have Councillor Alice Carter, and Councillor Carter was partnered with Councillor Bill Ionidas, and brought forward the motion for tonight's debate, which, incidentally, was on homelessness, and a new housing project to support homelessness. And next up, we have Councillor Skylar Vinsky, and Councillor Vinsky was partnered with Councillor Paul Singh. Next up, we have Councillor Naomi Kubila, and Councillor Kubila was partnered with Councillor Scott Davie. Okay, next up, we have Councillor Eben Konkel, and Councillor Konkel was partnered up with Councillor Sarah Marsh. And last but not least, we have Mayor Evangeline Bragna, who was partnered up with myself. And as I said to her parents, I just hope she doesn't turn eighteen too quickly. So thank you to all of the students. Some weren't able to stay for the balance of the evening, but thank you to all of the students and parents who supported them. Thank you to the educators who participated in the contest, in particular, the students who were here this evening, representing WT Townsend Schools, Southridge, King Edward, Meadow Lane, St. Anthony Daniel, and Howard Robertson Schools. Thank you to all of them. And finally, as I said, thank you to the Kitchener Citizen, without whose support this wouldn't have been possible. And finally, I want to thank the three councillors who are quite involved in this issue and in this initiative, Councillor Fernandez, Councillor Dave Schneider, and Councillor Sarah Marsh. So thank you, everybody. So the next presentation we have this evening is the Mayor's City Builder Award. And many of you know that the Mayor's City Builder Award, we give the majority of the awards away each year during the annual New Year's levy, but from time to time, we do an award presentation in the course of the year, when circumstances provide us an opportunity to do that. And tonight, it's my pleasure to acknowledge that we're recognizing Theron Kramer with the 2017 Mayor's City Builder Award. And in the audience tonight, Mr. Kramer wasn't able to be here, but his wife Joy Kramer and his daughter Melanie Kramer are here, along with a number of friends. And I'd just like to talk a little bit about Theron for a moment, if I may. Theron has really been a champion of citizen engagement, as a cornerstone of democracy in our community. In fact, for eight years, he was involved with Compass Kitchener, together with Councillor Sarah Marsh, prior to her being a councillor. And in fact, for six out of those eight years, he was Chair of the Committee, where Theron helped guide the City of Kitchener's extensive, community-wide surveys and consultations to ensure that our community's priorities are the basis of our corporation's four-year strategic plans. The essential role that resident engagement plays in the City of Kitchener's culture today is rooted in the work that Theron led during his time with Compass Kitchener. In addition to that, Theron has been a tireless advocate for making our community a more equitable, inclusive place for all. He was one of the first directors of the KW Multicultural Centre in 1973, when it began offering services to new immigrants to the area. He served for decades on multiple boards of directors for community groups, including the Centre for Community-Based Research, the Global Community Centre, and Theatre and Company. He was the founder of the KW Race Relations Committee. He led the Immigration Partnership Council for a period of time, and chaired the KW United Ways Community Impact Council. He served as a community representative on the Research Ethics Board of Rufford-Laurier University, and was a founding member of the Community Research Ethics Office. For eight years, he led a monthly television panel on local issues on Rogers Community Television. As a member of the Central Frederick Neighborhood Association, he led an OMB appeal to protect homes during a particular issue that that neighbourhood dealt with many years ago. He integrated his sense of social justice into his career, where he worked for the federal government, delivering social justice programs, the Waterloo Wellington Training and Adjustment Board, and the Ontario Trillium Foundation. And in the past, he's been recognised with the Queen's Diamond Jubilee Medal in 2012, and was an honoree of the KW Multicultural Centre's Equity and Inclusion Dinner in 2013. And tonight, it's my pleasure to invite his wife Joy Kramer and his daughter Melanie Kramer forward to receive the Mayor's City Builder Award on Theron's behalf. Oh, sorry, there's one more person that wanted a picture. Joy, did you, or Melanie, did you want to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Vrbanovic. Throughout our life together, I have never known a time when Theron wasn't involved in some cause, community group, or municipal organisation. I recently looked through one of our filing cabinets, amongst a sprinkling of personal files, I was amazed at the number of organisations and causes with which Theron has been involved, a few of which Mayor Vrbanovic has mentioned. I am very proud of the contribution to our community, and sincerely thank the City of Kitchener for the recognition being given to him tonight. Thank you.
So, thank you, Mayor Vrbanovic, and council. Growing up tagging behind Theron, I experienced his engagement, and consequently, my own, with many different communities in this city, from refugee and newcomer groups, to arts organisations, to neighbourhood associations. His work and volunteerism have had a huge impact on me, as they evidently have on others. He always likes to point out that he did not do any of this alone, and I hope that others will continue the inclusive community-building work that enriches this fantastic city. This evening, my mother Joy Kramer and I are honoured to accept this award on his behalf. And the following are a few thoughts from Theron. Good evening, your worship, council members, and fellow citizens. Thank you for this opportunity for a few brief remarks. First, I want to congratulate Jeff Wilmer on his impending retirement as CAO. While Chair of Compass Kitchener, I always felt supported by Jeff in our efforts to engage citizens in Kitchener's various planning processes. I hope that his replacement will continue to support the renewed efforts by Compass to ensure ever-increasing citizen engagement. Certainly, this council's acceptance of the new neighbourhood strategy that focuses on the sustainability of all neighbourhoods, not just those with the greatest needs, is strategically important to such engagement. My only fear about this strategy is that resources used to encourage other initiatives by the various communities of interest that cross neighbourhood boundaries may be forgotten. Your description of this award I am receiving tonight stresses that city-building is about community-building. The broad not-for-profit sector is an integral part of the infrastructure that should be a part of our successful community-building. That sector also needs your ongoing attention and assistance to build a vibrant and economically successful community. Such community-building requires creative, progressive approaches. Your ongoing backing for the vitally important creative arts and culture sector is a good example of this. Some people argue that such support is not really municipal responsibility, but you know, and is recognised in the city's and the region's economic plans, that arts and culture not only attracts businesspeople and their families to the area, but that the sector also contributes to the economy in a significant way. I hope that you will continue this recognition, and even increase assistance to the smaller arts organisations that struggle every day to keep their efforts alive. Encouraging neighbourhoods to embrace the work of arts and culture organisations is another way to show them how important you believe those efforts are. Council's recent contributions toward more affordable housing in Kitchener, and your involvement with the Local Immigration Partnership Council, the region, and other community partners in coordinating efforts to meet the crisis of settlement and long-term integration needs of the Syrian refugees, demonstrates that most of you are committed to serious, inclusive community-building. I hope that you will continue to see the importance of applying the lessons from that experience to other refugee groups and newcomers, who contribute so much to our community, and whose presence is vital to our long-term economic growth. Which leads me to what I feel is some unfinished business from my term as Chair of Compass Kitchener. This council made a commitment to ask the provincial government to allow all permanent residents in Ontario, not just those with citizenship, to be able to vote in municipal elections. Permanent residents include landed immigrants, who pay the same property taxes, the same service fees, et cetera, as citizens. These newcomers are often the entrepreneurs that create small businesses and employ others in our community. Although it may be too late for the 2018 election, surely it is important enough to continue to push for it in the future. But it will take more than another letter from the Clerk's Office to get the provincial government to move on this. It will take an individual or entire council to champion this move. Thank you again for this award. I truly appreciate it, and I'm sorry I cannot be here in person. But my family is here. And I want to thank Joy and Melanie, and all of their friends who are here as well, for their lifelong support for my small efforts at building a city that truly values community-building in all sectors.
Thank you to both of you for coming in this evening. I had the opportunity, as Joy knows, to speak with Theron earlier today, and he, as Melanie indicated, had hoped that he could join us, but circumstances didn't allow for that. But at the time, he said, "So how many minutes do I have in terms of my speech?" And you can tell him that he kept it quite on time, and sent the important message that I knew he wanted to. Councillor Etherington, you wanted to add something?
Thanks very much, Mr. Matt. I just wanted to say that many of us talk frequently about doing the right thing, but because such action can be unpopular, and often provokes negative pushback, few are strong enough to consistently have the courage of our convictions. Not Theron. For decades, he has somehow found the energy and courage to be the principled, ongoing conscience and champion of an inclusive city and community that he helped create and build. And for that, Theron, the local philosopher, won my respect and admiration. And for his unfailing efforts, we are now most certainly doing the right thing by giving him the Mayor's City Builder Award.
Councillor Marsh? Councillor Marsh? Oh, sorry. I thought it was still with the students, so I didn't have to click.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Mayor Vrbanovic, for so quickly jumping to present this award to Theron, who has been a mentor to me for many years. And, you know, we have many of the students who were part of the mock debate still here in the audience, and I just want you to take note that this is a man who, from a very early age, saw that his ideal city was not something to sit back and wait for someone else to create, but someone who worked together within the community to build it. And so I hope that that serves as some inspiration to all of us, young and old. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillors Etherington and Marsh, for those comments. And we will, we have one more presentation, and then we'll pause for two minutes to allow those who want to leave to do that, or if you need to. In the meantime, please feel free. The last presentation, in terms of community presentation, that we have, is one to our outgoing conductor of the Kitchener-Watari Symphony, Mr. Edwin Outwater. And Edwin, as you know, is finishing his 2016-17 season with us after a ten-year career with the KW Symphony. And as he steps down, he will be leaving as Music Director Laureate for the KW Symphony, taking the previous laureate, former conductor Rafi Arminian, and he will become the first ever KWS music director emeritus. But tonight, we're here to talk about Edwin. And Edwin, it was funny, I was on 570 this morning, and this was one of the things we were talking about, and Lisa Drew couldn't help but reference, like, "Ten years ago, it was amazing." Like, we had this, like, surfing dude come in as conductor to the City of Kitchener and to Waterloo Region, and it was incredible. And truly, I think, Edwin, you've left a lasting legacy on the Kitchener-Watari Symphony, which will include the release of the orchestra's first recording in over ten years, titled "From Here On Out" on the Analecta label, where it included critically acclaimed music by Nico Muley, Radiohead's Johnny Greenwood, and Arcade Fire's Richard Reed Perry. And I think that type of recording speaks to the innovative and unusual programming that Edwin brought to the Kitchener-Watari Symphony, where he developed Hack the Orchestra, the world's first orchestral hackathon, which took place at the Centre in the Square back in May 2015. He also collaborated with neuroscientist and author Daniel Levitin on the Beethoven and Your Brain Intersection Series concert, and developed the Quantum Music at the Frontier of Science Programme in partnership with the University of Waterloo's Institute for Quantum Computing. During his tenure, the Kitchener-Watari Symphony Orchestra has seen a dramatic increase in subscription and overall attendance by nearly forty percent, and a rise in donations by over sixty percent. And as Board Chair Catherine Cop was quoted as saying, "His charisma, along with his ability to engage with anyone and everyone about music, has been an incredible asset to the Kitchener-Watari Symphony." The KWS was fortunate to be able to keep Edwin for so many years, and we now understand that he needs to move forward to pursue his other work. And in terms of that, we know he will go on to other communities and do great things, but we look forward to having you come and visit us periodically. And on behalf of Kitchener Council, I'd like to present you with this plaque, which reads, "The council and citizens of the City of Kitchener," and I invite you to come down, "presents to Edwin Outwater in recognition of your ten-year career as the music director with the Kitchener-Watari Symphony, celebrated this date. Thank you for your innovative, creative, and collaborative approach to music, and introducing new audiences to KWS, and at the same time, enhancing KWS's status nationally and around the world. We wish you continued success with your musical journey."
Thank you, Mayor Vrbanovic, members of council, and wonderful staff. You know, it's such an amazing thing that this is all coming to an end. When I got here, I did, I came here with a surfboard, I guess, but the idea, the thing I noticed right away when I came here was the incredible musicians that make up the orchestra, the beautiful concert hall, but also something really special, because were the quality of the conversations I had with the people here, whether they be on council, or whether they be people I met in the street, or in the bookstore, in the yoga studio, or in the science institutions that make this place happen. And I knew that there was something happening here, I knew people were thinking about the future. I've certainly seen that come to pass in the last ten years, not only, especially in this city, just the way that it's changed since I arrived is remarkable. And I wanted the orchestra to reflect that change, as I saw it happen around me, to be partnered with all these incredible thinkers and creative people who live here, these people who love the city so much, to open the orchestra to everyone who's interested in any kind of music, and to collaborate in ways that were really special. And I can say that I think we did all of that, and that was pretty amazing. And it was all because it's a team effort, that people have to think and try things that are new, and make the arts, and society, and cities, and everything continue to evolve. And to be a part of that momentum is a huge honour for me. So I think, I just want you to know that the work I did here, and working with you, is so meaningful to me, and it is going elsewhere, is something I can say. That the projects we've done, for instance, in the last ten years, are being adopted by institutions like the San Francisco Chicago Symphonies, Lincoln Centre, the Kennedy Centre, and in conversation and collaboration with artists like Rene Fleming and Yo-Yo Ma, they're all hearing about Kitchener and what we did here. And it's amazing, it's just, now when I show up in various places, they know already what we're doing. So I hope that's brought some recognition to this wonderful place. I think the future is very bright. One of the reasons that I'm leaving now is I know that the organisation is in very good hands, at the board administrative level, and in your hands, of course, and very vibrant new music director coming in just a year or so, Canadian Andre Fair, and I think you'll, I'm really excited about him as well. So I couldn't be leaving in a more happy and wonderful way, and I just want to thank you for your support. You can't quantify inspiration, it's hard to measure, but it is essential to the life of a community in a city, and an orchestra is in the inspiration business, and I'm happy to have inspired some people in the last ten years I've been here, and I couldn't have done it without your support. So thank you. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Edwin. Counselor Janetski, you wanted to add something?
Yes, thank you very much, Edwin. Thank you very much for your contribution to our community over the last 10 years. I know when you arrived, the symphony was in dire straits. It was the SOS, Save Our Symphony, fun and direction that we were trying to go to keep the symphony alive, and with your direction, and artistically speaking, and the fresh look from the States in terms of your youth and enthusiasm. I still didn't see a surfboard on the stage yet, but anyways, you have that surfing feel to it. But I know you've collaborated a lot with the community, you've provided a new direction, you've provided a new direction in terms of some of the music that you've always provided with Intersections and other programming. And I also had the wonderful pleasure of having you on my radio show back over the years to interview you and that's KWS Symphony in terms of programming for those seasons. So thank you very much for your contribution to our community, and I wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors, symphony-wise.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janetski. And I think Andrew Bennett, who's here as well, as the Executive Director of the Symphony, would probably appropriately scold me afterwards if I didn't remind people that Edwin's final concerts are next Friday and Saturday at the Centre in the Square. And there are still some limited numbers of tickets available, so don't miss your chance. You can call the Centre in the Square box office tomorrow or go online and get your tickets for Edwin's final concerts. So with that, Edwin, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
And before we move on to the municipal awards, I'll provide this opportunity for a minute or two for folks who want to leave to take this opportunity to step out, and then we'll continue. Okay, if we can, we can resume, we'll go on next to, I'll invite up Dan Murray to present the following awards, which were awarded to GIS staff at the recent Urban and Regional Information Systems Association Be Spatial 2017 Conference. So, Dan, over to you.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Verbanovic and members of council. I'm thrilled to be here this evening to share two awards with council that were recently won by our IT staff for their innovative geographical information system solutions. Very proud of the accomplishments of staff as they exemplify both the innovative and on-demand themes of our digital Kitchener strategy. On May 3rd, in Markham, the Urban and Regional Information Systems Association Ontario Chapter held its Be Spatial 2017 Conference. It's an annual industry training and exposition that attracts geospatial professionals in the GI industry across Ontario. David Van Reel, GIS technologist, won Silver in the Innovation in GIS Award category for the development of asset management risk models. David collaborated with our asset management group to build models for determining the reconstruction and rehabilitation priority scores for municipal assets, such as sanitary sewer pipes, storm sewer pipes, and road pavement. This was largely a manual process in the past. Leveraging asset data stored in our Work Order Management System, CityWorks, and combining it with other sources of asset data, David used our GIS tools and our software to develop an efficient automated process to analyze the data to create the asset risk models. This new approach has given city staff more in-depth and accurate information for each of the asset types being modeled. Hannah Solstrom, GIS technician, won the People's Choice Award for her Citizen Science poster highlighting a new Kitchener Natural Areas Program she's developed for winter bird monitoring. The program uses an Esri GeoForm to collect bird sighting data from volunteers in the field and display the results of the monitoring program in real time using an Esri story map. This allows volunteers to feel more connected to the process and their community of Citizen Science volunteers. What was once a tedious paper-based process that resulted in forms being lost or not returned is now automated, providing better information capture and accessibility to the data. We have these two awards, and I'd ask Mayor Verbanovic to come forward, and we'll present them to you.
Congratulations to Dan and the GIS team on these awards. Next up, I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge two other awards, which we received as a municipality. And we have two of them. The first one is the 2016 Sustainability Promoter of the Year Award, and the second one is the Travel Wise Award for Leadership and Innovation. And we received these awards at the Sustainable Waterloo Region's annual event earlier this month, and Counselor Fernandez was there as well. We're joined this evening with some of the staff involved with both awards. Ken Carmichael is here on behalf of the group that worked on the Travel Wise Award, and that included Danny Pimental and Miranda Byrd. And then, in terms of the award for the Sustainability Promoter of the Year Award, we have Brandon Sloan here, along with, I believe it's Natalie Goss and Lauren Nelson? Am I good? Okay. And in addition to the three of them, Sandro Bassanese, Brian Bateman, and Tina Malone Wright were involved with that award. And actually, on the, sorry, on the transportation planning, there were three additional names, David Seller, Jeremy Lewis, and Barry Cronkite, who were all involved with that award as well. And so maybe I'll ask Ken to come up for the Travel Wise Award, and we'll do a picture. And then if I can ask Brandon, Natalie, and Lauren to come down for the other one, and we'll circulate them then to council to see. And I should say that Sustainable Waterloo Region made a point of saying that each of these awards are actually made up of components from various construction projects that either they as an organization have been involved in or some of their staff have been We're almost through the presentations. Now, there's a couple that didn't quite make the agenda this evening, and one of them is kind of related, I guess, to an announcement last week, and that's the pending retirement of our Chief Administrative Officer, Jeff Wilmer. But more importantly than his retirement, which will have an opportunity to recognize and acknowledge before the end of August, last Friday happened to also be the occasion of his 26th anniversary with the city of Kitchener. And so while we will, as I said, have plenty of opportunity to recognize all of his service to our municipality, tonight we want to acknowledge you for your 26 years of service with the city of Kitchener. And last but not least, I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge someone who all of us around the council horseshoe are going to miss after this week. And as you know, tonight is our deputy city clerk's final meeting, because Colin Goodeve has decided that it's time to go home and go back to the community that he was born in, where his parents still live, and he took on a job as deputy clerk in the region of York. And Colin started with us, actually, it's been quite a while, it's been 13 years almost. In fact, he started on July 5th, 2004, as the committee administrator. In 2012, he was promoted to the Supervisor of Legislative Services, and in 2013, he became the Manager of Council and Community Services and the Deputy City Clerk. And while all of those are roles within our organization, I think Colin will be best known for his many attributes to us as a community, not the least of which are his positive attitude, his humor, his ability to think outside of the box and research and find creative solutions. And secondly, the Roberts Rules of Order, it can practically be renamed Colin's Rules of Order, because nobody knew parliamentary procedure around this place like Colin did. So tonight, Colin, on behalf of all of us on city council, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for your 13 years with the city. And as I said, when I was up in the region of York for some meetings last week, heck no, we won't let him go to the regional clerk. But all the best to you as you go on and return to your new community. Okay, so that gets us through all of the presentations, and we will now move into delegations. And our first delegation is Mekki Elshar Nubi with respect to bike lane implementation on David Bergy Drive. And I'll just remind our delegations that they have five minutes to make their presentation. Welcome, Mr. Elshar Nubi.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for having me again here. Two weeks ago, I presented to you on behalf of 20 David Bergy Drive. On David Bergy Drive, we have four residential addresses. So I was presenting to you on behalf of 25% of the residential addresses on 20 David Bergy Drive. But I'm pleased that we have also people representing 177 David Bergy Drive. So today, we're collectively representing 50% of the residential addresses on David Bergy Drive. This is not really about bike lane implementation. This is more about traffic calming review on the Street of David Bergy. Staff report, I think INS 17033 recommended an installation of bike lanes, and because of that, recommended removal of onsite parking, both ways on the street. And I came to you two weeks ago, telling you, and I submitted a petition, saying, "We unequivocally oppose to removal to the onsite parking on the street." Just reminding you, this is where our 20 David Bergy Drive is, and if you look down south of the picture and past the bridge, then you'll find 177 David Bergy Drive. So I did a little bit of homework. By nature, I'm an engineer and I'm a researcher, so I just kind of dig into stuff. So I looked at the city of Kitchener proposed traffic calming policy. The policy of city of Kitchener says you do two public information meetings, and then you do a final survey. And on that final survey, 50% of the residents affected, they need to reply to the survey, with 60% need to be in favor. That's the city of Kitchener traffic calming policy. It says 50% of the residents directly, under review, must respond to a staff-initiated questionnaire. I understand also that under the city of Kitchener traffic calming policy, if the street is identified under the master cycling plan, then the cycling facilities need to be incorporated in the review. That doesn't mean you don't do the survey, as far as my understanding. We on David Bergy Drive did not receive a survey. In addition, we submitted a signed petition, as mentioned before, objecting to removal of street parking. Also, the employees working at the long-term facility at one of the public meetings also stressed that they want to keep one side parking. Traffic calming measures actually says you put on-site parking if you want to actually calm traffic. You don't remove it. So this is very important. We actually want to keep the parking because we want to calm the traffic. Now, the report that I mentioned in the beginning recommends that the cycling, put bike lanes. The 85th percentile speed on that street, from Otto Street down to 177 David Bergy, is 60 kilometers an hour. We want to get it down to 50. Again, a little bit of research, I looked down to the city of London traffic calming policy, and based on the research, they found putting bike lanes would reduce the operating speed by up to 5, the 85th percentile, only by up to 5 kilometers an hour. So we know this is enough. We don't need to put bike lanes. Go back, go find out, the bike lanes are going to work, and then go back, come here, do another report, because this is taxpayers' money, in my opinion. So right now, the speed is 60. If you look at me here, it's 60. Right? Now, we're going to remove the onsite parking, that's going to go up to 65. Then we're going to put bike lanes, that's go down to 60. So we haven't done anything. So we've been doing all this work, we have this recommendation, and in my humble opinion, it's not really going to do anything. We've got kids on the street, we've got seniors on the street. This is the measure, yes, collect the roadway to schools. We need to take action now to calm the traffic now. With science, I'm telling you that this is not going to work. This is not enough if we really want to calm the traffic. Now, let's look what the city is doing in other places, and it's very good. On Dunes South Drive, traffic calming review. I understand it's not on the city of Kitchener master cycling plan. I do understand that. But they did do the survey. They did not get 50% response, but the majority of response was in the favor of what they chose. So we got two streets in the city of Kitchener. Dunes South Drive, they followed the city of Kitchener policy, they recommended cushions. David Bergy Drive, I don't know if they followed the policy or not. My understanding is we should have got a survey, we did not get that, even though we are on the master cycling plan. So the other thing I want to point out quickly, and I know my time is up, if I can distribute that, I took pictures, I saw the old report, and there is an updated report that I downloaded on Friday, and I don't know how to hand that to you guys, so I took pictures, actually, of how many cars exist. So we got two copies of the thing here.
Okay, sir, I can just ask you to stay at the mic, because otherwise, the television cameras won't pick you up.
All right. All right. I move a lot when I talk. So the previous, or the original report, said there are seven cars parked as a peak usage on David Bergy Drive. You will see on these pictures that being presented to you, I just went and counted, and I found 11. This is an example. So I found 50% more peak than what the report says. How did I find out? I don't know. But you got the pictures. These pictures, what I think they are, are facts. I don't know why, and the report says peak 71, the picture's in front of you, it says 11. In the most recent report, apologize that I remember the number, it says just in front of 20 David Bergy Drive, in addition to the visitor parking on our complex, that there were in total seven cars. I went and counted, you'll see the pictures, 13 cars, 50% more than what the report says. I don't know why they are 50% more than what the report says, but you have the pictures, you have the proof, you have the facts. It is 50% more. Our parking at David Bergy, 20 David Bergy Drive, is not underutilized. Please look at these pictures. It's actually overutilized. In fact, we had to force the residents not to park at the visitor parking because it's overutilized. These are the facts in front of you right now. So again, to summarize quickly, we opposed the removal of onsite parking on both sides. We came two weeks ago and said it could be on one side only. We're unequivocally opposed to that, and we have 50% of the residential addresses in front of you today. The other thing to point out, there is a wetland there. This is not only about 20 David Bergy Drive or David Bergy Drive. This is about the entire city of Kitchener. Mr. Mayor, we have a wetland there. People come with their cars and their kids, they stop their cars, park for an hour or two, they take pictures, they visit the wetlands. If you come on our street, you will see signs saying, "Churchas may cross by," "Gees and ducks may cross the street." So if you put heavy parking there, what are we going to do? They're going to drive to Beech Blossom or somewhere else and try to find a parking and then walk back? They literally stop on the bridge and take pictures and show their kids. So this is about the entire city of Kitchener. This is not even about survey only of only us. This is being utilized by everybody in the city of Kitchener.
Okay, sir, I can ask you to start wrapping up, please?
Yes. So to wrap up, we unequivocally oppose, unequivocally opposed to removal of onsite parking. We don't believe that the city policy of traffic calming review has been followed. Only one part has been followed, which is the cyclic implementation in the review. Not necessarily you have to enforce it, but in the review, but the other part about the survey has not been implemented. So we would say, if you want to reduce the speed, you can go ahead and put speed cushions on the street to actually achieve something that can be done. Because we know right now, by science, it will not work to just put bike lanes. Alternatively, we can go back, send the survey to the residents, and have the residents have their say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We do have some questions for you. Counselor Galloway-Celac.
Yeah, just a couple questions so we can completely understand where you're coming from. The primary reason that you're opposing cycling lanes is because of the reduction of on-street parking, is that correct?
Yes, you're right. We're not opposed to by any means the cycling needs. We're opposed to reduction of parking, and that the measure only of cycling need will not satisfy the desired outcome of reducing the speed to be safe for the citizens.
Okay. So you would be in agreement if we put in the cycling lanes and put in bay parking?
Yes, we would be in agreement, but we'd have, I don't know what other...
Okay, if there's another delegation, I'll come to you separately, sir, if you want to speak?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And just to reiterate the points that you made with regards to your pictures, your experience living there is that the visitor parking is, you said, overutilized, and your experience on-street parking, that there's typically during peak times, would be closer to five to 10 cars parked in that specific area, and we're not even talking about the long-term care and retirement area.
Yes, on that specific area, it's somewhere between seven and 10, sometimes 11 cars. That is our experience in the area, yes. And that's why I went out and took the pictures to show.
And can you just confirm or reiterate the point that you stated with regards to what happened when there was an overutilization of the parking? You had bylaw come out, and what was...
Yeah, we have bylaw come out, and actually, ticket residents, I've been one of them, that's on TV, I guess, who parked their cars on the visitor parking. That's because other residents, they didn't find spots for their visitors to come and park on the visitor parking.
So the residents are using some of those visitor parking spaces, but it's your experience now that it's more visitors using those parking spaces, and it's still overutilized?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Iannidis.
Thank you, Mayor Banovich, and thanks for your presentation. So I don't know if Counselor Galloway-Celac was touching upon that. So when you took those pictures, did you take pictures of the visitor parking of those properties to see if they were full?
Like an hour property?
Yes.
Yeah, you have, you have two pictures there, and an hour property.
Oh, I didn't see them those. Okay, that's good.
So you see, there's two pictures from inside the property and one outside on the street.
Okay, that's good. So the one question I want to ask is sort of like a hypothetical question, because I've had the exact same incident happen in my board. So what I wanted, what I would like to know is, what would you say to those residents that we said no to when we wanted to put bay parking in their area? What makes your area that much more special than the residence I represent?
Okay. Counselor Iannidis, can you move your mic a little closer to you?
Because they get to vote, they have the right to vote and everything else. So why is your area more particular or special than their area?
It's a very good, it's a very good question. In an area related to our area, if you, if we can pull up the map, you will see that, you can see how isolated we are to find any alternative solution. So if you look up, you can see if you put bike lanes anywhere in that residential area north of the picture, you can find parking in nearby streets. For us, we would have to walk between 300 and 500 meters to be able to find onsite parking. And we've, so in addition, we've demonstrated the demand, I guess, on the area. So I understand your concern, of course, why would it be very specific to this area, but I think it's a unique situation, and any other situation like this, I think, should be definitely considered, and if you have to walk 300 to 500 meters to, for your visitor to come, or visitor parking to come. But the other thing I mentioned is not only special about this address. This is about the wetland, and you can see on the picture the wetland. So this is not about us only. This is about the city of Kitchener. So people from your ward probably come and drive on David Bergy Drive, and they park on the bridge for an hour, two, or three, and then they take the pictures and enjoy the wetland. So it's not only something special about this address, it's something about the entire street because of the existence of the wetland. Right, when you go to Victoria Park, everybody in the city has parking so they can enjoy Victoria Park. It's a sign or a similar situation here where people come and visit the wetland.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Banovich. Thanks for coming in and your presentation. Just trying to understand the parking situation at your complex. Is there, do you have garages in your units?
Yeah.
And so could you park a car in the garage and park a car outside the garage as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Fernandez.
Thanks. You have made some very interesting and valid points, and in seeing this map, I can see how you're actually serving not just your own area, but the broader area. Is there any opportunity on your property for an expansion of your visitor parking?
No. So on our property, there are assigned visitor parking spots, and there are assigned spots that are owned by residents. So they're part of their, the landlord of that spot.
Right.
So my answer is, there's no.
Sorry, sorry. Are you a condo corporation, or is it...
Yeah, we are condo corporation.
Okay. That's why I thought I would see if there was an opportunity for an expansion, but in your opinion, that there is not at this time.
Yeah. The only, I mean hypothetically, the only way would have to, which we can never do, and we're not allowed to do, to take it from someone who owns a parking spot.
Of course. Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor Davey.
Thank you, sir. Just following up on that question, so I, and I'm not sure if this was the intention of Counselor Fernandez's question, but is there no, like, we're not talking, we're taking away someone's existing parking spot. Looking at the size of that parcel, there is no place that there could be additional paved parking on that site?
No, really, if you look at the map, or I can, I can describe, if you're coming from Otto, it's basically, it's basically a U shape. I'm going to come back to the mic. It's basically, it's basically a U shape, and that U shape has, is fully utilized with assigned parking spots. Every, I would say every inch of it, whether it's visitor or whether it belongs to a resident. So it's fully, absolutely fully utilized.
Okay, thank you.
And if you look at the two pictures that were submitted, you can see, and there's just one right to the other, one right next to each other to the other.
So the units there are independently owned? They can't, it's not property of the condo corporation, the green space that I'm seeing in between?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
The green space that I'm seeing in between some of the structures there, that's not owned by the condo corporation, that's owned by individual units?
The green space between...
Well, I'm just, again, I wasn't planning to go down this road in terms of the discussion, but I'm seeing some green space in the circle on the map here that, yeah, there's, yeah, green space in and around.
So I think, I think your question, Counselor Davey, is, you know, where's the property line of the property, and it's not that white line? I guess your property, I'm guessing, ends very close behind those townhomes? Like, there's not a lot of additional property that could be turned into parking lot?
No, this is the wetland, sir.
Okay.
So just right behind our backyard, to the other units that just would be on the right-hand side of us, this is all wetland. Nobody can touch it.
Okay.
So basically, out my house and all the other houses, they, except the ones on the street, they look right on the wetland.
Okay, so everything that isn't built already is a wetland, that's, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Those are all the questions we have of you. Thank you, sir. Are there any, sir, the other gentleman, did you want to speak? If you want to come forward, and if you can let us know your name, and the clerk, after you speak, will also get your address, because we need that for...
I'm Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Joe Lopez. I'm a resident of David Bergy Drive. I agree with what my friend said to you today. In addition, I would like to say that we live in a very high-density area where most, other than the townhouse condo units that have single parking and single garage, most single residences in the area are also high-density. Most lots are between 28 and 32 feet wide, a lot of them with double driveways, which leaves on the widest lot, 16 feet of roadway to park. And usually, it's occupied by the homeowners on street parking, which leaves nobody else in the same high-density area with any extra parking. We live in an area where we have three schools, retirement home, and wetland. There's a lot of people that park in our street when they come and pick up the kids from school or deliver them to school, and there really is no other parking available anywhere in the area. So it would be more, I believe, more productive or more, or better to have street parking, designated street parking, rather than bike lanes. I've lived in the area since 2008, and I occasionally see somebody riding a bike, but it's very, very seldom. It's not in high demand for bike lanes, as I don't see bikers on the street. The calming speed procedures that could be implemented, that would be great, because what we see is a lot of speeders going down the road. When we have traffic, or when we have cars parked along David Bergy Drive, which is most of the time on one side, then the traffic is slower. When there's no cars parked along David Bergy Drive, we could see motors exceeding speeds of over 80 kilometers an hour in a residential area, which is very, very unsafe. And it would be very unsafe for cyclists, as well as us living on the street. So I really was highly discouraged from bike lanes and allowing street parking, not only for the convenience of the local residents, because there is no other way of parking. I live directly on David Bergy Drive. If I have, I have a single-car driveway and the garage. If I have, I own two cars, my wife and I, and if I have a guest come over, they would have to park at least 500 meters away, which would be unfair. So I would really encourage you not to disallow the street parking. I agree with one side of the street, definitely, not both, because it slows the traffic down too much, and, but definitely, we need one side of parking. There's just too many residents that have single driveways and have double vehicles.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for the delegation? Okay, there aren't any questions. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Iannidis, you had a question on the delegation, questions of staff? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess my question would be to Mr. Carmichael. From my understanding, bicycle lanes, when we implement bicycle lanes, bicycle lanes are not used for traffic calming measures. Is that correct?
Through the chair, in response, that's not the intention of implementing bicycle facilities, but I will advise that by marking the roadway and defining the narrower lanes that are brought on by implementing the bike lanes, that we do see reductions in speeds as well.
Okay. So when we're implementing bike lanes, we don't send out a survey in particular for the installation of bike lanes?
Through the chair, that's correct. We have an approved cycling master plan that the council has approved, and as we implement the recommendations of that plan, we certainly notify and keep the residents up to speed on that, but it's different than the traffic calming program in that it's not a survey, it's an already approved plan.
Okay. So with the traffic calming measures that were proposed here, what exactly are the specific measures that we're implementing?
Through the chair, there's no traffic calming per se aspect to this recommendation. Our procedure, when we have a traffic calming review recommended, if it also has cycling facilities recommended through the approved cycling master plan, what we do, and this is outlined in our policy, is we will implement the cycling facilities first, and then come back and re-study the area to determine what the new existing conditions are, and then proceed with a traffic calming review at that point.
Okay, so in theory, there's really no survey to be handed out for any traffic measuring. So whether there's a 50% approval or 60% approval, it doesn't make a difference?
That's correct. The survey is in reference purely to the traffic... That's correct. The survey is in reference purely to the traffic calming.
Okay. My other question is, I'm not sure, Mr. Carmichael, if you can mention it, because one of the delegates had mentioned that the swamp, the, the marsh area is an area where people want to stop and take pictures. And from my vivid memory, if you were to drive around on the side streets, there's other areas where you can walk and have access to that park, rather than David Burgy Drive, which to me, would be an unsafe situation in the first place to park. It would be a better idea to park on the side streets.
Okay, gent, certainly, gentlemen, we've given you an opportunity to make your, your presentation to council. Now, it's between council and staff, and then council to debate. So, thank you for your understanding. Mr. Carmichael?
Can you advise what the question is in the council?
Like, is, is there other walkways from the side streets that can go into this marsh?
Frankly, I do not.
Because it looks like I can see some green spaces here, where there's a walkway. Like, it's not an official walkway.
I would believe, and I can't say this with 100% confidence, because I haven't been out there, but there would be access from the neighboring roadways in Watercrest, Crescent, Pine Martin Crescent, that about the back end of the, the wetland, there may be opportunities for pedestrians to access there as well. But I can't say that with confidence.
Okay. And further upon, to touch upon the property that was identified, that that was wetland, if I, the way I look at it, if I look on the property with the townhouse development, between two of the units there, that would not, that wouldn't be classified as wetland. If you look at south of it, there's the bottom unit, and then the next unit up, there's a green space in between there. To me, that, that would not be classified as wetland. That'd be classified as part of the property.
Through the chair, in response, I would agree, on the property, wouldn't be, wouldn't be formally recognized as a wetland, but the comment I will make on that, is when developers do make proposals for townhouse developments, condo developments such as this, they commonly are maximizing the space on-site, and typically, they're not leaving wasted space around. There is green space requirements through development plans and things like that, so...
Okay. And my last question. These townhouse units, I forgot to ask an delegate, are they all, do they all have garages?
Through the chair, I can't say that with, with confidence. I don't know, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fernandez. Go ahead.
Ken, can you just remind us where David Burgy Drive is on the priority list for traffic calming?
Through the chair, it was identified as one of the top three locations last year, and we identified this for a review.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
And I, I mean, sitting on the Cycling Advisory Committee, I know that this is our usual format. We do the cycling, and then we'll do traffic calming. But, just as a thought, because of the uniqueness of this wetland, and the fact that it does draw numerous residents, probably from outside of the immediate area, would there be a possibility for us to consider combining a traffic study, a traffic calming study sooner, not combining, sorry, flipping our process on this particular site, doing the traffic calming first, and seeing what the situation is now, taking into consideration that we've got a number of different issues than we normally do on some of our other streets?
Through the chair, we believe at the staff level, that it's, it's very wise to do the cycling infrastructure implementation in advance of the traffic calming, for reasons being, as mentioned, implementation of cycling facilities can have a positive impact on, on traffic conditions and reduce speeds. So, before we go, go in and start assessing and getting input from residents, and basing it on current-day studies, it might all change based on the cycling infrastructure going into place. So, from a staff level, to us, it makes sense to follow up after the implementation of the cycling facilities, re-study the area, do the comparisons for the before and after, and then work with the residents on a traffic calming plan from that point forward. Were we to do the traffic calming plan in advance, it might, it might compromise our ability to put cycling facilities in afterwards.
Okay. Who owns the Laurentian Wetlands? Is that the city-owned property?
Through the chair, I do not know that.
Okay, okay.
The answer to that, just for the viewing audience, was yes.
Yes, okay. And you may not be able to answer this, but maybe somebody in the room can. Why have we not provided some kind of parking just adjacent to David Burgy Drive for people who obviously are using this as a, as a place to walk?
Through the chair, I would suggest that the foresight for implementing the cycling facilities, I'm not even sure that it would have been approved at the time that this development in the wetlands were developed. So, current-day status, there's parking allowed on both sides of David Burgy Drive. So, it is being accommodated. It's our recommended implementation of cycling facilities and sacrificing that, or compromising that.
Mr. Redman, you wanted to add something?
Through the mayor, we don't always, we don't typically add parking to our natural areas as well. There's only specific destination natural areas where we would typically add parking lots. There's parking in relatively close distance to the wetland. So, most people that are visiting wetlands are able-bodied, and, you know, can facilitate a walk of 200 meters or so.
Can we have, can I have an understanding of what the distance is, say, from the very last street, which is unnamed, at the very north, and just a little bit, little bit north of the Google word, to where the dotted little circle is? Does anybody have a sense of how far that is?
Through the chair, we did measure that. The distance from the site of 20 David Burgy up to either Windflower or Wake Robin is approximately 200 to 250 meters, and the distance down to Peach Blossom, or Crescent, is closer to 4 to 450 meters.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
Just on that point, with regards to Windflower Drive, those are townhouses that don't have room or capability for on-street parking, and Wake Robin's already well-utilized in the parking realm of things. Would you have any knowledge of that, to confirm that?
Through the chair, we do have not executed studies of what parking usage is on those streets. Your comment is acknowledged, but I will also comment that when we approve subdivisions through that process, we do ensure that the developers provide an on-street parking plan that provides a minimum number of visitor spaces within that subdivision.
Which is fair, but it just may not be as close to the intersection of Ottawa and David Burgy and Windflower, as we're suggesting at this point, with 250 meters. Is that fair?
Fair.
Okay. And my other question would be, who, and you might not be able to answer this, does anyone know who is responsible for removing the snow on the bay parking on Max Becker Drive?
Through the chair, I believe there was an agreement made at the development that, I hope my memory is serving me correctly here. I know there's a special arrangement in regards to that, that I believe, the most recent I heard, is that the Good Life Fitness is responsible for clearing snow out of those parking bays.
So, you're saying that the city plow comes and dumps all the snow into the parking bay, and then they're responsible for removing the parking bay onto the street, onto the curb-faced sidewalk?
Through the chair, I can't speak to the timing of what happens before which, but that would be arrangement, I believe, yes.
I'm just saying, it may be a similar situation that we would have to deal with here, which is already being dealt with. Obviously, we would be doing it ourselves, though. That's all my, well, I guess I just want to make a point. Your report suggested that to put in 10 spaces of the bay parking would cost $100,000, but you have changed that estimate to what?
Through the chair, we've followed up further with our engineering group, and got a more detailed estimate, and can report that the estimate is now $30,000 in that area.
Okay. Just in case anyone didn't get that email, or for the viewing public who have a copy of this report. That's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Vivanovic. I apologize if this question catches you off-guard, Mr. Carmichael, but at the, at the end of David Burgy Drive, there's the Chartwell Retirement Home, and the mention of speed bumps has been brought on to, to slow the traffic down. Would our emergency and fire services have issue with speed bumps on a street that leads to a retirement home?
Through the chair, we're speaking about a what-if, if and when we get into the traffic calming review, but I believe this is an emergency response route, therefore the speed bumps would not be permitted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there don't appear to be any, oh, there are. Counselor Davey?
Sir, yes, I just wanted to follow up on, again, on that email. There was, in the email as well, there was an, in addition to $30,000, there was an operating component. Could you remind us what that would be, in terms of maintaining, if we were to go in the direction of building the additional parking?
Through the chair, operations has identified an annual cost of approximately $2,000 to maintain and clear the snow for this parking bay. They've also identified other concerns within the report, being in the suburban area.
Okay. And again, it's, I recall from that email as well, it is staff's, staff is not recommending the installation of the parking bays?
Through the chair, that's correct. Based on the studies we've done, and the information that we have available to us, that's our recommendation.
Okay. And further in that email, you also indicated that should we, should we go in the direction of the parking bays, that there is no funding source for that. Why is there no funding source for that?
Through the chair, in our opinion, at the staff level, the development of parking on-street is not directly a benefit to both traffic calming or our cycling infrastructure funds. So, that's our position, that, that it shouldn't be taken out of there.
Okay, so, again, to reading between the lines then, so this hasn't actually been done before, in terms of building parking in a situation like this?
Through the chair, to my knowledge, no, this would be the first that we've done this.
Okay, thank you.
Counselors Fernandez and Marsh, are you looking to have additional questions?
Yes.
Okay, no, that's fine. Counselor Fernandez.
Ken, on Pioneer Drive, where we have the cycling lanes, just past the fire station, we still have parking there, right?
Through the chair, yes, we do, and that, that's a direct result that we have a wider roadway there.
Okay, so that roadway is wider than David Burgy Drive?
That's correct.
Okay. Because that's, I, I was trying to compare the, the two of them, because they're both major collector roads, they both go to schools, they will follow the same thing. Would we not be able to, would we lose that much cycling laneway if we did leave the parking, say, within that dotted area?
Through the chair, if you could clarify, you're, you're asking if we were to maintain on-street parking in the area of 20 David Burgy Drive?
Right.
Through the chair, response to that is, that would eliminate our ability to mark the on-street bike lanes, if we were to do so, just because of the road width.
Okay, but we have, we have done that on pieces of Pioneer Drive. I'm just thinking in front of the townhouses. I think we, we've, because we have the median there, just a little bit past, maybe, maybe it's worn away, but there isn't a bike lane in that section.
Through the chair, when we do these plans, and if I do recall, the Pioneer Plan, we did include bike lanes through that entire corridor, right from Dune Village down to Homer Watson Boulevard.
Okay, so it's just that it's washed?
That would be my guess, yes.
Okay. I, I'm just sort of throwing it out there, that I think that that might be, as, you know, as a strong cycling advocate, and, you know, I stand the risk of being crucified at Cycling and Trails Committee, I'm just wondering if we may need to just rethink that for this particular situation, instead of adding a parking bay?
Mr. Redman?
Through the mayor, so a lot of cycling professionals would argue that your cycling network is only as good as your weakest part of that network. So, if we were to remove it for a few hundred meters, it would significantly reduce the amount of potential usage, especially by schoolchildren who may want to cycle to the schools that are located within the neighborhood.
Counselor Marsh?
Yes, two questions. One, are we considering the possibility to bring the sidewalk, to reduce the boulevard, so that the sidewalk becomes curb-faced? Would that then allow for parking on one side?
Through the chair, I'm not sure if I fully understand your question, but we would have to widen the road, physically widen the roadway to accommodate parking and bike lanes.
Right. So, okay. And the second question is, if, do we have a precedent set for privately owned property owner to come and ask for on-street parking or a parking bay and, and pay for it?
Through the chair, no, we've not had that in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. There don't appear to be any additional questions. I guess I'll just ask one, and you may have sort of touched on this already, but I guess getting really down to the, to the crux of the matter. And I can appreciate that there are, you know, other similar circumstances, where we've looked at bike lanes, or, you know, and things like that, and in other parts of the city. But it seems to me that in light of the, the wetlands and so on, that this is a particularly unique set of circumstances. And so, I guess my question to staff is, should, you know, should we be looking at trying to address these particular circumstances around, around the parking, but recognize that the funding shouldn't come out of the existing source that's being proposed?
Through, through the chair, I think I understand your question, and I would respond in that there's no question on pretty much any residential street, there's a demand for on-street parking. Whether it's of convenience or of necessity is another question altogether, but there's definitely demand for on-street parking on typical residential roadways. Generally speaking, and we've been implementing cycling infrastructure around the city for a number of years now, that this is a unique situation. We haven't run into a lot of situations where we've had to recommend the removal of on-street parking. I would suggest, had we the road width here, we would obviously want to maintain one-side parking if we could.
Okay, Mr. Redman, you, okay, you don't want to anymore? Okay, that's fine. So, in, in light of that, are you, are you suggesting that perhaps we should be looking at an option? Mr. Redman, now you want to?
Through the mayor, so we have considered all of the feedback from, from committee two weeks ago, and staff's position remains that there isn't demonstrated need for parking bays in this area. Should council direct staff to include those, then we would ask council to identify a funding source for those.
Other than the, the one that's being proposed for the bike lanes?
That's correct. So, we don't recommend funding it from either of those programs, so we would seek council's feedback on how we would fund the implementation of those, because as staff and professionals, we haven't identified a determined need. It's more of a desire to continue to keep parking in that area.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
Is it time for me to bring forward a motion?
Well, it's actually coming from committee, so I'll be going to the committee chair first.
Well, it was deferred, so technically, there wouldn't be a motion on the floor, would it be? Mr. Roberts rules. Give you one last stab at it?
Through the mayor, as it was referred to the state at this meeting, the motion from the committee would then come forward.
Okay.
Sorry, the motion would come forward, the one from committee. Right, that's what I thought. Okay. So, we'll come back to you, though, for an amendment, Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
Got it.
Counselor Davey?
Yes, sir, I'm having trouble finding, I just need clarification on that last part about the identified need, because I, I could have sworn I read an email that was sent to us, that it was not staff's recommendation to install the parking bay. So, if I get some clarification from staff on that, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Redman?
Through the mayor, so that is correct. Their, staff have not identified a need for parking bays, based on the parking studies, and we've had staff go out multiple times throughout the week and on weekends. It's more of a desire from citizens in the neighborhood to have parking in that proximity.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Galloway-Silak?
As a resident of that area who drives this road frequently, and we've heard from the residents, I appreciate the fact that staff were out there a number of times, and I can tell you I have never once driven that street without at least five parked cars on it. It doesn't matter the time of day, it's more so in the evenings and on the weekends, and especially like not only near 20 David Bergy Drive. Sorry, it's a point of clarification, because it's the reality of the situation.
And you could make that, I'll, I'll let you make that argument when, when the time comes. Please. I will, Councillor Ionidas, if you can bring forward, and this is item?
I always have one more further question.
Okay, go ahead.
And then I'll bring forward the recommendation. Mr. Carmichael, because the point's been raised a few times now that the area is, is unique, and one of the things that I think is unique, and, and I think you, I think you mentioned it with other neighborhoods, in particular around schools, where this is a significant issue, and we don't, we don't implement parking bays around schools. So to me, those would be way more unique situations than this situation. Can you just elaborate with that?
Sorry, can you expound on that a bit more further, please?
Okay. In previous discussions, when we were dealing with the parking issues around schools, and I'm pretty sure this type of parking was suggested probably three or four times within all those times of those discussions, and to me, that would be a unique situation rather than this as being a unique situation. And we've adamantly said no to those situations.
Through the chair, your comments about the schools is a fair one. We're obviously, we have a mandate to try to discourage the driving of children to school, and we're hoping that, that more kids can walk to school. Having said that, this particular situation, I would suggest is unique in that it is a residential area on a roadway that is not, it, it, there's a significant amount of green space here, and I think that has made, made it unique in that, in that regard.
Okay. You want me to move the recommendation? Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
Okay. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Marsh, that the consideration of following motion be deferred on May 15, 2017 council meeting to allow staff to prepare additional information on implementation and operation of costs posed alternative parking, that on-street bicycle lanes be installed on both sides of David Bergy Drive from Ottawa Street to Activa Avenue as outlined in Infrastructure Service Report INS 17-033, and that on-street parking be prohibited on both sides of David Bergy Drive between Ottawa Street South and Activa Avenue, and further, further, that the Uniform Traffic Bylaw be amended accordingly.
Okay, thank you. And is there a seconded?
Councillor Marsh.
Councillor Marsh, thank you. Councillor Galloway-Silak?
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment to that recommendation, and that would basically read like on, on your second page of the report where it says, with the exception of a parking bay for 10 spaces in close proximity to 20 David Bergy Drive, I'm actually going to amend that to say seven to 10 spaces. I don't want to just pigeonhole ourselves into 10 in case only seven fit in a, in, within the infrastructure area. I think seven to 10 would, would work. So that would be the amendment that I would make.
Do we have that written out for the clerk to put on the screen?
Well, if he wants to take my report, it's in the report.
Okay.
Yeah, is it the only thing I changed was seven to 10 versus, yeah. I do.
Is that part of your amendment?
I guess it would have to be, eh?
Yep.
I was just going to verbally say it, but my funding source, even though staff doesn't agree, would be the cycling, traffic calming, and parks. And I would suggest that it comes one-third, one-third, one-third. And my rationale for that is we're supposed to be here to do traffic calming, and one of the reasons why the bike lanes are coming in is because of the traffic calming review. The bike lanes wouldn't be coming yet if it wasn't for traffic calming. So I feel those two pieces are intertwined and responsible for the fact that we are here today talking about this with the removal of parking. So I give it one-third, one-third, and then I give parks one-third. I don't know exactly what line it would come out of, but I leave that with you, if that's okay. I say parks because of the wetlands, and we have worked on a master plan for the Laurentian Wetlands, and we have had residents with input there. It, it's an asset that we have, it's a facility that we own in the city, and so we need to provide parking for that facility. Yes, you can go in off of Pine Martin and the other, but you can't go very far because you're in people's backyards. And so it's not the same view that you get when you're on David Bergy Drive, which is where the people go to look at the wetlands and take their pictures and enjoy it. And so those would be the three sources that I would suggest that the funding come from. So that's my motion, can I?
Okay, is there, is there a seconded for it? Councillor Singh? Did you want to speak to it first, Councillor Galloway-Silak?
Yes, with the opportunity to potentially speak at the end if there's anything additional.
Yep, go ahead.
To be blunt, right now, the traffic calming measures on this road are turtles and geese. That's the only thing that slows traffic down. That's very concerning for many people in the area and should be concerning to all of us. When we talk about alternates to where people could park, if we're talking about Windflower Drive or Wake Robin Drive on the other side of a regional road, we're asking people to cross that regional road. As I mentioned in the funding, this is a city asset that we have, that we own, that we should also provide parking. So this is a dual ask. It's not only for the residents of 20 David Bergy Drive, but it's also for the residents to access one of our facilities. I think it's a win-win if we put the parking bays in. We're able to utilize our bike, bike master plan or cycling master plan by implementing it, but still having an opportunity for people to park on the street. And to do so for much less than we anticipated at $30,000, yes, it's still $30,000, but I think it's a compromise that we need to make. We have to look at the uniqueness of this, and I, I, not every location is going to be this way, where you are bordered by wetlands, by a regional road, and so it makes sense in this location. I don't think it makes sense in every other location. When you can park on other residential streets to get to a location, that's different. These, this does not have that opportunity to do that. And I understand the one gentleman who's here, unfortunately, parking might not happen. What I'm suggesting won't happen on your portion of David Bergy, and I know it's going to upset the residents of the retirement and the long-term care facility. But to me, they have parking right across the street on Peach Blossom Crescent. So they have a very short distance to walk, and while it's probably not comforting to you, I do really believe that this is one exception that we need to make. And if there's another example of this in the city that can come forward and hit all these boxes, city facility, require parking, putting bike lanes, traffic calming, and can hit all of those pieces without having, with having, yeah, the regional road and having 400 to 450 meters for guests to, to walk, then I would consider putting parking bays in there too. But I think this is a very unique circumstance that we're dealing with here, and I really hope that council will support this. I'm very familiar with the area, I'm there on a couple times a week, I know what the traffic's like. I ask you to trust me, and I ask you to support this.
Okay, before I continue with, with comments, I do just want to ask staff one question, and this may be a question probably best for, for Mr. Chapman. And I realize that, you know, staff may not be recommending this, but if we were inclined to support this but not support the funding source, because it, 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 I don't necessarily want to see it coming from those areas, what else might be an appropriate funding source? And the DCAO's non-existent slash fund is not an option? The non-existent one, Councillor, I mean, now, Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair, the only other alternative that would come to mind that might be appropriate is capital contingency. Council only allocates $180,000 to that budget every year, and so certainly if the cost were $100,000, I wouldn't recommend use of those funds. Typically, it is modest costs that were not anticipated that are funded through that account.
Okay, thank you. I will, since I'm in the chair, I obviously can't move that, but that is something that committee or council may want to consider. Councillor Singh?
Mr. Mayor, as part of my comments, can I just ask a quick question of staff?
Sure, go ahead.
Include my comments in it. Typical to most speed calming measures, I'm assuming that this will be reviewed a year from now?
Thank you. Through the chair, our intention is to do the appropriate studies after implementation. It, it doesn't fall in line with the, the one-year follow-up that the traffic calming outlines, but because this is going into a traffic calming review, it, we definitely have defined plans to measure what's happened after the bike lanes are in, so we can go forward with that.
Okay, you know, I seconded the motion because I, when the idea was first brought forward, I, I saw it as an interesting approach to solve a problem, and a problem that doesn't necessarily just exist in, in this particular area, as unique as it may be, but it's, it creeps up in all parts of our city where our residents really do rely heavily on, on street parking. And when traffic measures are implemented, that goes contrary to what the day-to-day lives of those residents, how they're affected. Where I struggle with this, and this is why I had referred this to council, that I had wanted to really hear from staff in their opinion if, if this is a viable option. And although now my opinion has changed contrary to committee meeting, it's not because I don't have the, the trust or, you know, I don't hear, hear the appeal of Councillor Galloway-Silak, I think there needs to be time given for staff to review, I think we look at all our, at, at, you know, our speed, our, sorry, our traffic calming measures and the, the way with which we do it, with improvements that we've already made, but also consideration of if this is another avenue to add one extra tool to the tool belt. And if so, through the budget process, come back and, and outline the, the appropriate asks for future traffic calming measures as well, because this, this can be a useful option. So where I do see a compromise, and it may not necessarily please the, the ward councillor, is that we, we approve the recommendation as staff have recommended, but at the same time, do a wait-and-look approach. Give an opportunity for staff to review this a year from now. There may be a slight extra cost in waiting, but that is still a direction we can go a year from now if we see that the traffic in effect has bottlenecked there more, and it is as much of a concern as has been laid out by Councillor Galloway-Silak. And that can be through the budget process coming forward for next year as well. So I, I won't support it for the time being, the amendment, but I will wait to see, and I encourage Councillor Galloway-Silak to, to bring this issue back if she feels that the issue is as strong as she feels right now, and we can relook at this in the coming year.
Councillor Davy?
I'm really, I'm really sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Sir, sorry.
Does our case matter to you?
Sir, sir, sir.
We have.
Sir, you've had an opportunity, sir, I'm going to ask you to sit down, please. You've had an opportunity to make your case.
But this is, but no one is speaking about our kids, sir.
Sir, 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 I'm asking you to sit down, please. You've had an opportunity to make your case, and now it's council's opportunity to debate it. Sir, I'm asking you to sit down, please.
No one is.
Sir, I'm asking you to sit down, please.
That council doesn't live in.
Sir, it's now up to council to debate it. You have made your case. Sir. Gentlemen, gentlemen, council has heard, gentlemen, gentlemen, council has had, gentlemen, council has, okay, I'm going to recess for five minutes, please.
He doesn't know what he's talking about. No, he's, he's going to talk about what he's talking about, he doesn't know what he's talking about. He doesn't know here, he doesn't know anything.
So that was my opinion.[1495.23]
We're good to continue.
Yeah, I appreciate members of council indulging me on this. I would like to propose a deferral on this matter until the cycling infrastructure goes in on Ottawa Street, which is in approximately a year or two. Currently, there is nothing to lead them to, and so I understand why staff are coming forward now because of the traffic calming review, but I think it would be more prudent for us to wait to put the cycling infrastructure. The road's wide enough for cyclists and cars right now. I do think we need to continue to look at ways to curb speeding on that street as it is right now. I'm not talking about a full traffic calming review, but we look at ways to try and decrease the speeds of traffic. But in the meantime, I was supportive of moving forward with cycling lanes, but I think really at this time, it's probably more important for us to just hold back, wait until the region puts their cycling lanes in. I sit on that committee, I know it's coming in the next couple of years, and then we can readdress it at that time. So I would propose deferral.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Counselor Galloway Seelock, do you have a date, or an initial date? Clicked in. Go ahead.
I don't have that off the top of my head. I'm gonna say until 20, fall of 2018, unless the region's implementation is beyond that. Does that make sense? Kinda gives us a point to check back in.
Okay.
2019? I don't know, I'm just, I, I'm, because I'm basing it on the fact that there's no bike lanes on Ottawa Street, so I just don't have that timing in my head, because I don't remember when the region's doing that reconstruct.
So can we suggest that that's the date that we're looking for, and we'll get that date? I mean, you know approximately when it is, kind of that range?
Yes.
And we'll actually have the actual time period put in the, in the motion?
That would be fabulous.
Is people comfortable with that?
It's not.
Okay, so it's post 2018. So, Mr. Clerk, I just need to get direction. So there was a motion and amendment. There's now a motion to defer. It would take precedent even though it was the amender that's making the motion to defer? Okay, thank you. And there was a second, Counselor Davie. Anybody, is everyone clear on the timing?
Yes, I have a recorded vote.
Okay, that's fine. So a recorded vote on the deferral has been requested. Was that, was that the vote? Oh, it was unanimous. Okay, sorry, I just switched screens and wasn't sure if that was from something else. Okay, so that has been carried unanimously, and so we will deal with this issue some point when the region deals with theirs. Counselor Galloway Seelock on that?
I just quickly wanted to, because I know the residents wanted to apologize for their shouting out, so I just thought I would do that on their behalf. They're just really passionate about where they live and what's happening, so I just wanted to give them a chance to do that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. Counselor Davie, were you still?
No.
No, and Counselor Marsh, you weren't keyed in for something, or you are? Okay, go ahead, on this?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So, considering the fact that we now have one less traffic calming review slated for 2017, I would propose that we direct staff to come back with a recommendation for an additional street from the list for, to begin the process for traffic calming this year.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you. Through the Chair, the standard procedure with a traffic calming review is to do the cycling infrastructure first. I did an assessment on our traffic calming budget today, and I would caution council that the money we have available to us and the money we have earmarked to spend based on approved plans does not leave us a lot of cushion there, so doing an extra review might be put in a difficult position.
Counselor Davie.
Sorry, just a point of clarification. Did we, I don't think we deferred the traffic calming for David Burge, we just deferred the cycling.
That's correct.
Okay, so in that, in which case, I'm assuming unless there's a new motion, staff's gonna proceed with the traffic calming, which they would prefer not to do, from my understanding, so perhaps we need an additional motion to defer the traffic calming to sometime after the cycling.
Staff are nodding if that's what intent, if that's what the intent is, then we need that as a separate deferral motion.
I'll defer to the Ward Counselor.
Counselor Galloway Seelock.
Sorry, I'm to understand now, I'm supposed to suggest deferral of a traffic calming on a road that's got 80 kilometers an hour, is that what I'm hearing right now?
Well, I think...
The speeds are that high?
I think that's what...
No, I'm understanding that we have deferred the bike lanes, I appreciate that.
Right.
I understand staff's philosophy, but this is a concerning roadway, and so I'm not sure I'm willing to sit back and let years go by and us not do anything to address it. I'm not suggesting a formal traffic calming review, I'm suggesting that we look at other ways to implement it, whether it be with the new standards that are coming forward or things that we can do in the interim, because, as I said, the turtles and the geese are the traffic calming right now, and that's concerning, and so I, as the Ward Counselor, will not defer the traffic calming.
Okay, Mr. Redman.
Through the Mayor, the reason why we proposed doing the cycling lanes first is because the traffic calming could be a throwaway cost if we install measures and then we go in and add bike lanes afterwards. Those measures may not function properly if we don't know how council is going to land in terms of bike lanes in the future. So that was the rationale for doing the bike lanes first, followed by our formal traffic calming process. So staff's interpretation would be to defer the entire program for that street until the bike lanes are resolved.
So I'm guessing, and I respect that the Ward Counselor may be in a situation where she can't move that deferral, but if that's something that the rest of council wants to do in light of staff's recommendation, they could move that. Counselor Galloway Seelock.
I would like to suggest that we look at options that would be non-throwaway costs. In the meantime, I don't know what that is, I'm saying look, I'm not saying spend tons of money or time, but let's look at something, because it is a very concerning roadway for kids. It's on the traffic calming list for a reason, it got to the top for a reason. Police are already on that street, and it doesn't make a difference. So I'm suggesting that maybe we look outside the box. I'm not asking for the full traffic calming review, but something to try and decrease traffic until we get to the point where our cycling lanes are in.
Mr. Redman.
So through the Mayor, there's the community-led traffic calming program, which is coming forward shortly, and then there's the small-scale traffic calming report, which is planned for June, so I'm not sure the, how the mechanics of that will work in terms of selection, but that could be an option that council explores.
Okay, let's just keep this one on our radar and try to keep improving the roadway, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable where we're at? Counselor Marsh?
Yeah, sorry, I don't wanna put a cog in the wheel, but I mean, we have, last I checked a couple of years ago, I don't know what the exact number is now, it was 150 streets on that list, and we only do three a year. That's, that's, and if we're only doing two official traffic calming reviews for 2017, I don't see that as satisfying the needs of the community, so I guess I would just, I think, I just wanna remind council that we have an obligation to respond to the requests for traffic calming reviews. There are, like David Burge Drive, there are many streets that require additional actions. I think, you know, maybe I'm willing to take a pause for today, but I, I'm gonna bring this forward again, because I really think that it's our obligation. If we're not doing it this time, and we're gonna defer to budgeted initiatives like neighborhood-led traffic calming, then, then we should, we should really move forward.
Okay, so I'm gonna suggest that, Mr. Carmichael, you shared some information with us around, you know, what's been done, what's been committed and so on. If that can, can be shared with all of council by email, so that everyone has that information ahead of them, and if somebody at that point in time wants to raise this issue of looking at a, at a third one this year, then I think, once we have all of that information in front of us, we can, we can deal with it then. Okay? Thank you, everybody. We will now move on then to the tenders, and I will remind everyone that there is an add-on tender report... Oh, sorry, thank you, there is one gentleman here for item number on planning P2, which is the zone change application for First Capital Holdings, First Capital Fairway Corp. and FC Domain Holdings. Here to answer any questions, if we have any. And Counselor Singh, did you want to bring that forward? Number two on planning and strategic initiatives.
As the report outlined, it has been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Galloway Seelock as recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion, questions? No? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Brandon, are you here for anything in particular?
This is me first.
The tenders, okay. Cool, so we're now into the tenders. Somebody wanna move the tenders? Counselor Ionitis, seconded. Counselor Schneider. We'll go through them. B1, any questions? B2, flow monitoring, flow monitoring in Hidden Valley. B3, Old Mill Sanitary Sewer Pumping Station. B4, Grenville Water Main Replacement. For that, B4, B5, Counselor, B5, Trillium Drive Trenchless, Counselor Gazola.
No, I just, there are only two bids that came in on this, and they're miles apart. I'm just wondering if there's any explanation. One is at 150,000 and the other's 400,000, when we only have two bids.
Ms. Palmer?
Three, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I had that note and I didn't seem to bring it with me, but I'd be happy to follow up after the council meeting regarding that.
Counselor Galloway Seelock on B5? Okay, Counselor Fernandez on B5? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate staff's response to my questions, but what I did forget to ask is, is this a project that's going to be happening in this year, because there is some work that's also being done on Old Huron Road, EA, that's in, in process. I did forget to ask staff. If not, if you don't know Cynthia, maybe you can...
Mr. Redman.
Or Mr. Redman, sorry.
Through the Mayor, this work is planned to happen this year.
Okay.
So it is relatively small scale, and traffic would be maintained in the area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. B6, there isn't a B6, well, there is, I guess, which is the add-on report for Dukin Ontario Garage. Counselor Galloway Seelock.
Yeah, I just wanted to, it's a similar question to the last tender that I was gonna ask about, and there's three bids here, and there's a significant difference. I find that somewhat concerning. Is there any explanation behind that? 69% apart, according to Counselor Gazola.
Three, Mr. Mayor, sorry, that one I'm not aware of, but I can dig in and provide some information as a follow-up, you know.
I do think that's important, because there is such a difference, and it's a, it's a huge asset that we have, so I think it's important to get that answered.
Counselor Gazola.
It's not on this question, but in general information, there's one on sports fields fertilizer. I just wanted to, if we could deal with it now, Ms. Palmer might not have to stay till the very end.
Okay, so I'm going to ask that that one be moved out of for information-only, moved by Counselor Gazola. Is there a second to take it out of information? Counselor Ionitis, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Counselor Gazola, if you wanna ask your question.
And I, there, we're going with the third bid on the list, I just wonder if we could have a little more detail on why the top two, or the lowest two at the top were disqualified. The one, I understand the first one, it wasn't signed, but the second one, it talks about 50-pound bags and 55-pound bags, was a bid on the number of bags or on the total weight that we're purchasing?
Ms. Palmer?
Three, Mr. Mayor, I can appreciate that that sentence was confusing, we actually went over it a couple of times. We spec-ed a certain size of bag for the product to come in. When we did the calculation to work out what the alternative bid would be, we would have to buy an increased volume, and the cost would actually work out to try and get the same volume overall, it would be a higher cost with the lower, the smaller bag.
So then the tender goes out based on the number of bags, as opposed to the weight?
The tender goes out based on a number of bags.
Yeah, okay, then that's fine, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so the tenders have been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you, Ms. Palmer. We'll now move on to the reports of the committees, and Community Infrastructure Services, Counselor Ionitis.
Yes, it's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Sarah Marsh, that items one through nine, and we dealt with 10, and from 11 to 14 be approved.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Moving on to Finance and Corporate Services, Counselor Davie.
Thank you, it's a move by myself and seconded by Counselor Dave Schneider that the three items for Finance and Corporate Services Committee be adopted.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I would like to deal with item number three on that agenda, and I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask staff of when we get to.
Okay, you want, you wanna go ahead and ask them then now?
Yeah, okay, hi. This, this, it deals with the, the greenhouse gas emissions, and it deals with a policy that we're, it's being recommended that we move to. I first, a couple of questions. In the report, it states that we have hired a consultant, Clear Blue Markets, to, to assist staff in dealing with this issue. I just wanna ask whether, I don't remember that coming to council. Was that tender, how was that tender approved?
Ms. Fletcher?
So, through the, the Mayor, the contract for this year was under the threshold where we're required to come to council. If this expands into an ongoing service for the program, then we would package up a tender and bring it to council for approval. We were determining this year whether we needed the specialized consulting service or whether this can be rolled into the consulting service for the natural gas purchase as well.
But it's obvious that we're gonna need this as long as that cap and trade policy is in place, right? So wouldn't it appear that it's gonna be a long, a long-term commitment?
Through, through the Mayor, we contracted them for this year. If we are contracting this particular firm for the duration of the program, then yes, we would be looking to bring a tender forward to council.
Okay, so what we've contracted will cover everything for this year?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. The second question, and I just wanna clarify, that we have in place a program for natural gas purchases, whereby we, we will purchase up to 60% in the current year, which I'm gonna call a spot prices, and then we have the opportunity to purchase up to 40% in the second year, and 20% in the third year on what I think are future prices, futures. And prior to that, to this policy, that, that length of time went on for up to five years, is that correct?
Through the Chair, I believe that is correct, but we, it is a three-year cycle.
Okay, so that's what is, that's what is in place now, and what your staff is recommending under the cap and trade portion of it, a similar-type plan.
That is correct.
Okay, my final question on this is that, in dealing in this manner, which I look at as buying futures, we do that on the basis of somewhat speculating that the, if we buy those prices now, the prices will, will, will be higher in one or two years down the road. Isn't it, this is sort of a legal question, aren't we sort of getting into speculation when we're doing this? And I'm, does, I would, I didn't think the municipal act would allow municipalities to do, get into speculation like that.
Ms. McDonald?
Through you, your worship, I, the best way I can answer that for Counselor Gazola at this point is just that it's something that's under review, and if there was advice to be given to council, it would be given to council in a closed session.
Okay, I won't, I don't wanna hold the, it's under review by whom?
Well, staff would look at that issue based on any inquiry of council.
Okay, okay, so it's not under review by the senior governments?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Yeah, okay, no, I don't wanna hold up the process for that, that's fine. But I do wanna deal with this separately, okay?
Okay, that's fine.
And just a comment is that I, I won't support the proposal that staff are bringing forward. I'm in favor of purchasing natural gas on a spot basis, spot market, the same way we purchase gasoline at the gas pump, and so I don't favor that, I don't support that policy, and this cap and trade policy, which is drawn up now to be similar to that, I can't support it either at this time.
Okay.
And I'd ask for a recorded vote when you...
Thank you, Counsel, Counselor Marsh?
It was regarding number two?
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanna reiterate my, my hope that in future years, the Ever After Music Festival will come back with more reasonable ending time for Sunday, June, for the Sunday evening, because it is being held during the school year, and Sunday night, finishing up a loud music concert at 11:00 PM does sound like it's, it's not as, as reasonable as a 9:00 PM would be, and I appreciate the proponents' need to, to try to end the festival with a bang, but I, I also think that we need to really monitor closely how, how affect, how affected the neighboring areas are again this year, and, and really voice a strong request to, to the organizers to, to change their schedule.
Okay, and I think that was reflected in the committee discussion, and...
And I appreciate the proponents' need to try to end the festival with a bang, but I also think that we need to really monitor closely how affected the neighboring areas are again this year, and really voice a strong request to the organizers to change their schedule.
Okay, and I think that was reflected in the committee discussion, and staff can follow up both event and bylaw. Staff can follow up with the promoter for next year in that regard. Okay, so we'll take a vote. Number, we've been asked to deal with number three separately, and a recorded vote's been called, so we'll deal with that one first. All those in favor? All those opposed? That motion is carried, and we'll deal with numbers one and two. All those in favor, opposed, that too is carried unanimously. We'll now move on to planning, and there's one item left, Counselor Singh.
As outlined in the report, the item has been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Galloway Seelock.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, that's carried. Counselor Gazzola, you're bringing Heritage Kitchener forward? Go ahead.
There's a resolution, it's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Singh, in that it deals with allowing a demolition permit for a property on Aaron Street, and then also in conjunction with that, approving a construction permit in the place of the dwelling that is being demolished. It's in a heritage planning area, and so a heritage planning application had to be filed, and the committee, Heritage Planning Committee, has unanimously approved the action.
Okay, so it has been moved and seconded. Counselor Marsh.
Just a question, as the ward counselor. I did drive by the property, but I haven't seen the width of that property, and I was wondering about the detached garage site in comparison to the new house. Is it all going to work?
Yeah, they've taken all that account, that into account, what we recently passed in planning. That's all been taken into account.
Okay.
And it will fit in, they actually feel it will fit in with the community better than the existing property.
That's it, Counselors? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, that too is carried. Unfinished business? New business? Counselor Gazzola.
It's better late than never. I just wanted, I tried to catch your attention when you were doing the presentation. I just wanted to acknowledge the young gentleman that, in the mock debate tonight, that represented Ward Three, a young student by the name of James Mason, who is a grade six student at Southridge Public School. He didn't get a chance, he had another commitment earlier this evening, and so he wasn't able to be here for the presentation.
Okay.
So I just did want to mention his name.
Thank you, Counselor Gazzola.
Thank you.
Counselor Galloway Seelock.
Yeah, I had a concern that was raised by a resident, and I think it's a valid one to bring forward publicly, and ask staff to take a look at it. And the question really is, is there any way to get builders to produce homes that have solar panels or have geothermal energy or push us towards a greener city?
Mr. May.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I know that this is a topic of some debate amongst the building industry, and so why don't I get a detailed response from our chief building official and our planning division, and then I can connect with Counselor Galloway Seelock directly on that.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Bylaws, first reading. Just one second. Where'd my cheat sheet go? Here we go. And there was a late starter, Mr. Clerk.
Through the mayor, there is one additional bylaw that's requiring three readings of state concerning the zone change application listed under clause two on the Planning and Strategic Initiatives Committee report.
Okay, thank you. So they've been, the first reading's been moved by Counselor Singh, seconded by Counselor Davey, that leave be given the mover and seconder to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda, and that same be taken as read a first time and stand referred to committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Gazzola, that council resolve itself into the committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Counselor Gazzola, if you can click in.
Moving on to item number two on our agenda, dealing with a parking agreement at 166...
No, just before that, I'll move second reading of the bylaws.
Oh, sorry, I thought that you did second.
No.
Okay, will someone move second reading?
No, okay.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. Okay, now moving on to the first, item number two on the committee of the whole agenda, the parking agreement, 166 Frederick Street, Counselor, has been moved by Counselor Galloway Seelock. Are there any questions of anyone, staff? If not, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, moving on to item number three, license agreement with Bell Mobility, dealing with the Kitchener Market, moved by Counselor Janetsky. Any questions of staff?
Counselor Marsh has a question.
Thank you. Just curious about where the, about whether or not any of the new telecommunications equipment would have high voltage frequencies that might be detrimental to the people who work in the building.
Counselor Gazzola, Mr. Chapman wants, can I answer that?
Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair. I was not anticipating that question.
Sorry, yeah, I didn't think of it until just recently.
So I will provide my best answer, and then if I misstate anything, follow up with council by email. But my understanding is that all of the technology that is being implemented here would be subject to telecommunications standards in Canada, and so it's been approved for use for that purpose.
Yeah.
Whether or not, there's some debate around whether or not wireless signals have health impacts. That's a matter left for others to debate, but all I would confirm is that what's being installed here is authorized for this purpose.
Okay, so that's fine. What does concern me, though, is that within the scope of this motion regarding the facility at the Kitchener Market, we also are directing that staff can authorize to terminate or extend agreements anytime without bringing it back to council. So it'd just be great to know when, you know, if and when there were concerns raised within the community in the future, that then staff loop back to council to potentially change that arrangement.
Certainly, so we can commit that if we receive any negative public feedback or concerns, we can communicate that to council. And perhaps what I'll do regardless is follow up with staff on the question that you posed, and just share with council what is the standard or the science behind this technology, just to give you comfort that it is approved, and the concerns you've expressed aren't a factor here.
Thank you, and please stay clicked in, because my last question is regarding the very last clause of this motion, where it says all electricity reimbursements be used to offset electrical costs. Is that electrical costs at Kitchener Market?
Correct. So they'll be tying into our electrical system there using energy, and they'll reimburse us the cost, and that will flow back through the operating budget for the market.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Galloway Seelock.
Yeah, that's one of the points that I wanted to hit was with regards to the cost, because on page 3-2, it says that Bell Mobility will also pay the city a fixed amount annually that should cover the electricity costs. Is it should or it will? Because I think it's important that they're paying for all of it.
I think that's simply a reference to the fact that because it won't be separately metered, and it would be cost prohibitive to do that, we've estimated what the electrical usage would be, and they'll pay us an amount equivalent to that. So it would be within a very close margin, but there's no way to understand exactly what that dollar value is. But it's a modest cost regardless, I believe measured in the hundreds of dollars.
Okay. And any provider could potentially come to us and ask for the same service, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Actually, maybe I'll just ask one as a follow-up to that. It's probably not a big deal, but, I mean, can we not just put a meter on it so we actually know how much to bill them and not bill them? I mean, I know there's time of use issues, but is that not a way that could actually make it a little more accurate?
I'm sure anything's possible. I guess my sense is that it was a modest enough cost, that the effort involved in installing meters and having someone monitor those meters, bill Bell based on actuals, would outstrip the benefit of getting that level of precision.
Okay.
Any other questions? I have a question, Mr. Chapman. I'm not sure I clearly understand what's happening here. It seems to me that something, Bell is doing something for us for nothing, for free. And I'm just curious, you know, I don't like things that are free. What, does that commit us to them in some way in the future? I noticed you answered, Counselor Galloway Seelock, that anybody could come and do this. What is it exactly that they're doing?
So through the mayor, Mr. Murray offered to stay to speak to this, and he would certainly be the one to give a technical answer. All I can say is that my understanding is that based on the way wireless signals operate, the providers have a challenge providing a good quality signal within a building, especially a large building that has a lot of concrete. And so rather than putting up large towers, what they're moving now to is the small cell installations in public buildings. So I think we can expect in time to see them in places like the odd and arenas, other facilities where there's lots of use and poor signals. It's small equipment, and so there's no limitation on others being able to do it. And at the end of the day, in the past, it's our understanding that they had simply done this and not provided reimbursement. We've negotiated that they will cover the electrical costs and actually make a small contribution to revenue as well.
Okay, well, I was going to say that this is for a 10-year term? Is it, what we're doing, we're giving the rights just to the market, right? We're not giving them the right to all city facilities?
That's correct, and it's not exclusive, and there's a 90-day exit provision, so we can abandon it with 90 days' notice at any point.
Okay, so we don't have a law, we could get out of it quite easily, okay. Any other questions?
Counselor Ionitis had one.
Counselor, pardon?
Comments?
Yeah, comments, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to commend staff and Mr. Murray, because I think this is one of the opportunities, I know this council's asked for us to find other avenues to create revenue, and this is a great example, and I'm looking forward to, hopefully this rolls out to all the other facilities, so good work.
Any other comments? In that case, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried unanimously. Mr. Clerk, are there any other items to come?
Moved at the committee rise and report.
Okay, it's...
You got to say all in favor.
All in favor, sorry. Okay, it's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Marsh, that the proceedings and the recorded pecuniary interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the committee of the whole, held this date as attached heretofore and forming part of these minutes, are hereby adopted and confirmed.
All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Singh and seconded by Counselor Davey, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time, be finally passed and numbered seriously by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Counselor Janetsky.
Yeah, before you adjourn the meeting, you skipped over questions and answers?
No, we had some questions.
I'm sorry?
No, we had, two people asked questions.
Well, I, okay, then you moved on. I didn't realize they had already done it, so I have a question, too.
Okay.
Can we go back?
Okay, because it's something that can wait, or?
Well, no, I asked a question at the last council meeting about the Mayfair site, and staff responded back in an email shortly thereafter with the responses, and basically from the understanding was that based on council's decision and based on what had happened, and there's no bylaw enforcement that would take place because it complies, is it clear that what we see out there right now will remain the whole summer? And is that what's the intended? Because Corey Bloom was supposed to respond as well, and somehow the answer was hanging in the air, and I didn't understand what was happening next.
Okay, I think there were complete answers in the emails that we all got. There were a few of them. Mr. May, did you?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. This was an issue that was discussed back in, I think, May of 2016, and at that time, council gave direction to do some form of public art on the fencing around the property. That was done last year, and that will be done again this year, as per council direction.
Okay, Counselor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just following up on that question, I fail to see why we can't find a decent use for that site, instead of it just sitting there. I understand the argument on growing grass. There are buildings downtown where grass successfully grows. But anyway, putting that aside, there is space there where we could be, I don't know, growing garden areas, vegetables. And secondly, if it comes back again to us looking at an eyesore for the entire summer, if we're going to cover the fence with art, could we not make an effort to eliminate the entire site, so big pieces of art or something to block out that, what I think is a terrible eyesore? I think we could make more effort to use that site, but we seem reluctant to do that. So I would ask that question as well.
Okay, Counselor Etherington, I think I'm going to end this, because questions have been asked, staff have answered them. We need to remember, it's not a site that we own, and I don't think there's any more information that can be provided. Is that correct, staff? Mr. May?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct, and all of the information's been provided over several emails over the past, I believe, seven days.
Okay, thank you. So, motion to adjourn. Counselor Schneider, all those in favor, opposed, that's carried.